This meeting is ordered. It is Wednesday, May 15th, and we are here to have a meeting for discussion of community input and possible board action. Can I draw a call please? I will draw a call. Deb? Here. Kevin?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Nathana?
Here.
Policies changed. And Eric, you'll be here. I need approval of the agenda. The agenda has been prepared and disseminated in accordance with Board Policy 0166. Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, and second.
I'll say it.
Robert, I'll be second. You're standing. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion here or none? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye aye. Post motion carries. Again, the agenda item for tonight is item eight, discussion of community input and possible board action. Section A is comments and suggestions on Spooner High incident on May 9th, 2018.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming up this evening. I know that's a beautiful May afternoon and evening out there, and I appreciate you being here. The events of May 9th at Spooner High School were frightening for a lot of people. Unfortunately, incidents of school violence are on the rise across our country. And it really strikes a nerve for everyone when there's a concern of such an event taking place in our community. Our agenda this evening is really threefold. One is we'll begin by providing you with some information. And then we're going to provide you with the opportunity to ask questions. And we hold open the room to share your suggestions on how a district could improve its practices if such an event takes place in the future. I want you to know that the Spooner area school district takes safety very seriously and a safe school environment for all students and staff is a top priority. Tonight, we have members of the school board, Chief of Police Jerry Christman, Spooner High School Administration and District Administration on hand. You'll notice that we are recording this event today, but we're not live streaming as has become the usual practice at Spooner school board meetings. And we're not live streaming for a special purpose tonight. That is that due to concerns over the potential of breaching confidentiality of individual student information during tonight's discussion, we are not live streaming. Because such breach would be a violation of federal rules, can I ask that you not live stream this event for the sake of reason? Recording of the meeting will be available on the district website sometime soon. So with that, I'd like to shift gears and move into the timeline of events. And the first person I'm gonna call on is Spooner High School Principal, Mrs. Johnson.
I'll leave the board this way, just to start with the presentation, but just to share the purpose of my part of this today. Just to make sure that I'm sharing information so that everybody understands the timeline of events that may have led up to the concerning factors of the incident from last year. So to start us out, Monday, May 7th, I, Sarah Johnson, did receive a report of a missing key from a staff members key ring at the prior concert. After I received that report, I consulted with Dr. Aslan in preparation to investigate that concern. On Tuesday, the primary focus was the general safety concern associated with that missing key. So then I did, as is process, engage in investigation. And I started out with a consultation with Dr. Aslan as well as our safety coordinator. One of the pieces there that we've seen raised as a concern, but that we addressed pretty much immediately was a key replication concern. Given the fact that this key would pull out entrances to the internal doors of the building, we wanted to make sure that we addressed that pretty quickly. And from that, knew that there were some things that we could take charge of to make sure that if that were one of the safety concerns, that we could mitigate some of that by ensuring that local spaces were called to be on the lookout for any duplication of keys. We had confirmation that the type of key that we had was very challenging to replicate. So I took care of that concern with the district level people in place. My process for investigation involved a discussion with the students who were present at the prior concerts. I also included several individual student interviews, review surveillance, followed up on reports, and then also referred the missing key to the Spooner Police Department. Of note, related information, the reason I'm providing this information is that I did receive a report from a student with a concern of safety related to a missing key. And the nature of that report was based on an individual being present at the prior concert and connected another individual who made concerning statements in the past. From the investigation, it concluded that there was no threat after investigating that, plain theory clearly. Very thoroughly, I should say. Other information related to that is that approximately 9:00 PM, I had a conversation with our athletic director, who stated the same details from the report that had already been ruled out. And now, just for clarity, I'm not using student names. It's very important that I don't and I won't. But wanted to let you know that the contents of that was directly related to the report that had already been investigated and ruled out earlier that day. So I was able to assure our athletic director that there was no immediate threat, that it was a rumor, and it had already been cleared thoroughly with an investigation that day. At that time, I stated that the Spooner PD knew because it was in reference to a missing key. I had reported that verbally to Chief Christman and followed in an email earlier today. And again, I want to reiterate that the information from the students relevant to the missing key was not tied to a credible threat. Therefore, it was not recorded to the Spooner PD by school administration. I did, after I got that conversation with our athletic director, sent an email to the staff to arm them with facts to assist in the morning with any students who were concerned. Because at that time, my knowledge was that there were some students that were concerned about safety based upon, again, that information. And so they were provided what I knew at the time and completed that investigation and the fact that there had been no immediate threat reported. I communicated that with Dr. Aslan by a text to learn from the students who were concerned in the evening and again on Wednesday morning as some of those reported came through. And then also made sure that Dr. Diager was aware early Wednesday morning to brief them on the concern, to be able, the goal to meet with students to kind of sway some of their blossoming fears associated with that report. So on Wednesday, May 9th, staff at Spooner Schools did work with Spooner PD on the report that the Spooner PD had received and communicate with students, staff, and families as that investigation allowed. And at this point here, is that there, from here, there's a report from Dr. Aslan and Dr. Diager speaking about that today.
I'll call on Spooner High School Dean of Students, Dr. Brett Diager next, please.
I'll just pick it up as a leader. Okay, so on Wednesday, May 9th, I became involved once I got to the high school. Spooner PD had already been, they were already at the high school office. So when I went into the office, we immediately went into my office. And the first student was brought into my office for questioning, and that student was the focus of the threat. So right from the beginning of the day, we had a student that was reported to have made those threats. That student was in the office first thing in the morning. And we, I was working with Spooner PD, and we started with that student. We interviewed him. We kept him in the office under supervision until we concluded the investigation. And we went kind of down the road. We had a couple names that we started with. We polled both students that were available. From there, if they gave us any new information, such as any new names, then we polled both students that were available. And we just kind of went down the line until Spooner PD and myself kind of came to, or they came to the conclusion that there was no credible threat. At that point, once we were done interviewing students, immediately went to the district office to confirm that, started to report that to Dr. Aslan. And he gave us the go-ahead to call all staff and students down to the auditorium, ten minutes from that point. So that was around 9:10. We concluded the investigation. Spooner PD concluded the investigation. And we're in the auditorium around 9:20. At least that's when we started calling the students down and staff down. At that point, we gave our report and talked with the students. And we sent them back to get ready to go, get back to class. After that, we kept the office open, Spooner PD safe for a while. And we made sure to allow students opportunity to come to my office or to another, to the high school office to report any new information that might have came about just, you know, during that day that we might have missed. So we gave students an opportunity to come forward and let us know that, you know, such and such information has come about that we might not know. But at that point, it was, we had determined that there was no viable threat. So students had started going back to class, so.
I'm gonna pick the timeline for May 9th up shortly before 8:00 AM when I returned to this building from a meeting at the elementary school. There was a great deal of tension in the school due to the rumor that was going wrong. And I think it's very safe to say it was a very difficult situation for everyone who was involved. It was a peace of mind to know that Spooner High School was likely the most protected building in the city at that time. With members of the Spooner Police Department, Washington County Sheriff's Department, and Wisconsin State Patrol present here at the school. By the time I arrived, the Spooner Police Department and school staff had interviewed and searched the student who was alleged to have made a threatening statement about school violence at Spooner High School. There was a high level of confidence early on in the process that the student had not made the statements as had been alleged that had made. The student was in a very controlled environment away from other students and school staff members, being supervised by district staff throughout the morning hours. Something that I've learned through this process is that children who are accused of threatening school violence, whether they actually did it or not, run a fairly high risk of suicide following such an event due to shame, humiliation, and being ostracized by peers. So I want you to know the school staff not only worked with the other students and staff, but also that student as well who left that day and followed up throughout the week with the student and parent to make sure that the individual is okay. One of the positives of the day was that students in group and adults reported a lot of information to Dr. Diager and to the Spooner Police Department. I call this a positive because school safety is an ongoing process where there is a sense of urgency of anyone who sees or hears something concerning to record it right away. And that's what happened in this case. High school staff and the Spooner Police Department worked together around that information and conducted interviews as quickly as they were able. By about 9:15 that morning, Spooner Police Department was able to let me know that their investigation showed incredible direct threats are substantiated and based on their findings felt that students and staff were not in danger. I believe that I've been present to fully appreciate the tension that the situation caused here with Spooner High School students and staff members. And I've made the decision that it was important for all students and staff members to receive clear information from Dr. Diager, Chief Christman, and myself, that they were not in danger and that their school was safe as soon as the investigation was wrapped up as possible. A short presentation was held right here in the auditorium, and students were dismissed to their second block class. Presentation was live streamed, shared information outside the school and the community. The presentation was followed by a Skylark message to district families. We let families know that students were to receive an excused absence for the day if they stayed home or if they left school early. However, we did not change the normal procedure where parents need either pick children up or excuse them prior to the student being dismissed from school. We received a lot of feedback from parents and families district-wide that we should have sent out Skylark prior to let them know what was going on and that everything was safe prior to meeting with Spooner High School students and staff. But faced with this situation again, I made sure that the Skylark message went out to families, but at the same time, the presentation to students and staff took place. Another positive for the day was the hard work of so many people from the district and law enforcement with the sole focus of keeping students and staff safe. Thankfully, that's how the day ended, with everybody going home safely. Important work going forward is enhancing our procedures within the district so that we're able to take the right action and make the right communication at the right time if we're faced with such a situation in the future. Now I'd like to call on Chief Jerry Christman. As Dr. Aslan reported, we got to the investigation, but we got to it actually pretty quickly with people coming forward and able to interview everybody. And like he mentioned, we found a credible threat after talking to everybody doing our investigation. So we deemed that the situation was pretty much all done at that point. Everything was safe and secure over here. We haven't had anything further after our investigation, so nothing more is going to follow, so that's pretty much it. Now we're gonna shift gears and get into the opportunity for you to ask questions. And to help facilitate that process this evening, would you like to introduce our facilitator this evening, Captain Strander?
So good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Strander. I work with Strand and Associates. It is the company that is in the process of helping to coordinate the strategic plan for the district. So I've been in community a lot, I'm international. And what I can tell you is the work that I've done already with community listening sessions, staff listening sessions, teacher listening sessions, and a session last night with the school board is that all of the people that I've met, including community members and all the staff, are incredibly concerned and really proud of what happened here in Spooner. And you should feel really comfortable knowing that their concerns are about your children and the safety of children and staff within this district. Our plan tonight is to field any questions. You can come to the mic, pose those questions, please pose them to me, and I will direct them to the person who seems to be most reasonable to answer that question. But we want to make sure that there's an opportunity for you to be able to ask any and all questions that you have about the process, about what will happen going forward. I appreciate the board's perspective last night in saying, "There are always lessons learned." And how can we move forward and do this more successfully? So there's reason for that as well as part of the question and answer. So I open this up to anyone who would like to speak. Stacy Briggs?
Yep.
Come on now.
Oh, I don't need the microphone.
Okay, well, you might because we're taping this, so if you come down.
Talk to me, they'll hear me.
Okay.
Is there a key floating around that has not been?
So Jeff Jackson, can you field that piece?
Yes, I'll field that one. So the missing key from the teacher's ring is still on a common floor. In addition to that, there are a number of the same keys that are on a common floor dating back from the time that the building was opened.
So the answer to that is yes. Just a quick clarification, what does that key open? I know there's some confusion about that. What does that key do?
That key gives access to some of the classrooms in the school, so it's not an exterior key, it's an interior key.
So it doesn't open any exterior doors? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Is there a reason that a email, text, phone call, robocall, whatever you want to do, was not, the second that the Spooner PD showed up, why wasn't there robocall apparent with, just for general, we have a situation, we have it under control, we're investigating. Any texts you get from your kids or any phone calls you get, we are in the process of trying to take care of that.
Okay. Before we get that answer, you seem to be quite emotional about this particular situation. Is that the point that was emotional for you, is that you didn't have the information sort of done?
The first thing I heard about this was a text from my daughter at 8:10 in the morning.
Okay.
I should have been alerted by school staff or somebody in power in the school district.
Okay.
I find it very unnerving to get a shooter text from my daughter saying that there's an incident at school.
So let's be clear, this incident, as I understand it and the information I heard tonight, did not relate to a shooter. And I don't know whether your daughter included that in the text. Then I'll tell you a second thing. As a parent, I think that you have a right to be concerned when you give those kinds of texts from your daughter. I think you're right in feeling that. We've already had a discussion by the school board last night to say, "What are the lessons learned?" And one of the lessons learned that we were already hearing last night is, "Contact parents quicker." So let's answer the question. The question is about how come parents were not notified immediately rather than waiting to do the investigation first? So did you hear that, Dr. Aslan? He said, Miss Jackson, talk a little bit about the key process and then we'll go from there.
Okay. One clarification stills made on the key?
I'm sorry.
There's a key floating around.
Yep.
It opens doors in this building. I don't know if it was needed or not.
Yep, part of the discussion is making sure it's not replicated. Second is that there's going to be follow-up, that investigation will continue. And I know this is a little bit out of my lane of speaking, that we've had a discussion about the fact that the building has not been rekeyed since it was built. And so that is a discussion point for the building and grounds or from district level. Knowing that, again, as Dr. Aslan stated, that dating back for quite a while, there are keys of similar nature that are missing as well. So that's the discussion about rekeying.
And so as far as contact on a Wednesday morning, when, we felt that was really important to be putting our energies into conducting the investigation. And we were committed to providing information as soon as that investigation had been completed. And as I said earlier, if faced with it again, we'd have sent a school messenger out the same time that we brought students and staff into this auditorium. But we did have the students and staff in here 10 minutes after the investigation was concluded. So we, it was important that we were providing accurate information and complete information. And we were doing our best to gather that and conclude the investigation as quickly as we could.
Sure.
I understand that you were in the process of trying to get that.
Could you, could you please move to the microphone? I appreciate you allowing your voice, but the.
I think I can turn the microphone on. I think there's a switch on at the time.
I can turn it off.
Okay. When the kids get off class in the morning and the school has, we start setting up for us, every, I can probably say that 95% of the kids in the school have cell phones. Did you think that nobody was gonna say anything, nobody was gonna send out a text, nobody was gonna do anything? We were, we as parents were left with the rumors that the kids were talking about. Had we gotten something from the school saying, "We have something going on here, we're not sure what it is right now, please hold, you know, please hold. We'll get back to you as soon as we have more information for you." You guys could shut this down like immediately. Instead, you let the kids talk about it, we heard rumors from the kids, we had outside people calling, you know, Washington County Sheriff's Department or somebody who they, you know, assumed was the Washington County Sheriff. So you have an outside entity calling Washington County Sheriff to then start, you know, this whole thing the night before. You know, if we're gonna pull into the school and there's gonna be cops sitting there, maybe we could like send out something, just saying, "We have an incident, we don't know where it is, wait yet, please hold."
And I think you're right, and I think getting the information as soon as possible is the correct answer to it. I think we're also hearing Dr. Aslan say, "That's one of the changes that will be put in place because of it," and notifying parents.
I'm also hearing him say that he would have waited until they needed more information and would have sent a robocall out the same time they were talking to the kids. I'm saying, if you know that there's something going on, just robocall it and say, "We've got something going on, please hold." Like, so that we're not, the first communication is not gonna be from our kids.
Ready to go, first communication not from our kids? I hear your message, I know. There, maybe the, did the police chief stay? Ah, there. I wonder about this idea of when you give in information, even though it may not be substantiated, may be under investigation, how quickly you believe it's important to get that information out. Any comment on that?
When we're doing our investigation, we want to make sure that our information is accurate, that we're quite honest with everybody. So and so, until we get an opportunity to talk to all parties involved, witnesses, possible suspects, anything like that, I don't feel comfortable making just a broad statement about something. And maybe, I don't have the capability to do it in a robocall.
No, I'm just saying, from school administration, it could have, I mean, rather than have my daughter pull into school, it could have just been, there's, you know, we have something going on right now, we have an incident, we have whatever they want to phrase it. You're gonna see police cars, you know, the kids are gonna see police cars as they blow up to school. We are in the process of investigating this right now as soon as we have more information here, more than certainly get back to you. We just don't want you to hear it from the kids first. Because how many kids are gonna actually know what's going on?
Yeah.
Zero. And they're gonna feel it in the light. Yes?
You know, I agree with you that.
Thank you.
We didn't, I'm a born member and my, we, because we are so connected with the school, we saw the live stream. You may have been at work or something and not seen.
Oh, no, I saw it.
And we're still, my kids got home and I still hadn't received a official anything. And so you are right, we need to communicate with parents pronto. And they're as important as the students and. And they're as important as the students and the knowledge that they need to know. And you're right, when kids are texting, they're giving us information, what's going on? It's making it worse because we're thinking the worst and we have nothing from the school. So this is going to change. And hopefully, this won't not occur again, but we have no control over what people say or do. And if it does, we are going to be communicating very rapidly to parents. And we all know what you just said, we felt the same way. That's all I can tell you. We appreciate your comment.
Okay. The annoying question, I don't even know who it is, don't care who it is. Has he or has he not been muttering, saying things, being looked at since towards the beginning of school? This is not the first time that the administration has had to talk to him, deal with him, look at him, and I write out my mind.
When we receive reports, Dr. Deager and I self-follow up on them and communicate to the appropriate people, but we can't speak directly about his students, about his safety.
So it's possible that this has been going on since the beginning of school, without the saying yes or no? It's possible.
And in this case, it was not a credible threat.
I understand that. But this time it didn't have to be credible, because if he decided that something's going to happen, it doesn't have to be today or tomorrow or next week. And it's unfortunate that. It's just unfortunate, because my daughter has five months left here before she graduates. And for the next five months, I don't know whether or not she's safe here. In the back of my mind, I don't know if she's safe here because, I just don't. Which is sad because I was raised in the school. My brothers were raised in the school. I grew up in the school. And this, this is not the one.
So I greatly appreciate the information and I really appreciate your passion as well. Can we talk a little bit about if it had been a credible threat, the preparation that staff have already gone through? Because I think this idea of, are staff trained to keep your students safe, is an important issue here. So could someone talk about the, what I believe is called the ALICE training that staff have already received and how that fits in? Should it have been a credible threat?
Dr. Can you talk about the concept of ALICE? I'm going to have Mrs. Johnson and Dr. Deager talk about it. So the concept of ALICE is to really empower all adults that are in the building to make decisions based on the situation, based on the communication that they receive. This has been a credible threat, we've locked the building down and we've been making PA announcements about what the threat was, a description of the threat and the location of it. But that provides staff with this information to make a decision on whether they're going to evacuate their students out of the room, whether they're going to shelter in place, really is based on the situation. You know, in the end, the focus is on helping everybody survive and order intruder. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Johnson and Dr. Deager to talk about ALICE and ALICE preparation here. Could someone tell us what ALICE means as well?
Let me, can I? Our ALICE is alert lockdown and lock down or evacuate, five options, that's what Dr. Aslan was speaking about. If this was a credible threat, we would do pretty much what ended up happening, which was Splinter BD comes in and we, in conjunction with them, conduct an investigation and then determine from there what is best. And of course, knowing that any decision we make at the administrative level is always with the concern for the 354 students, 550 staff, you know, we would not have our doors open if there was a credible threat to safety that we were aware of. And we do work pretty closely with Splinter BD. We had an incident recently, two a year ago, when we've done that. So to kind of speak in hypotheticals, the answer is, if we have received a credible threat, if Splinter BD had received a credible threat, there would have been several measures put in place, depending upon their, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments, Stacy?
I understand that this will disturb people coming home for my daughter, I really do. And I know that I'm standing here as like a freak out parent and I may not be coming off this, you know, this floor, but I would like to. However, the one or two things that I have been told, not by my daughter, and one or two things that I have been told by my daughter, make me think that this is just a bomb we go off. There's a key floating around somewhere, and I get that there's other keys, but there's a key floating around somewhere and it's speeding up. And the fact that it opens any doors in this building scares me to death. Because the one day they decide to do something, they don't have to say anything to anybody. All they got to do is come to school and open a door that shouldn't be locked, and boom, it's on. I just wonder if in, I'm not trying to like diminish what you guys have done, I really am not, but it scares me that there's a key missing. This kid has made threats. People have heard these threats enough to call outside sources and report to the police. Because it don't, it doesn't make me feel comfortable that it's still, you know, the kid was interviewed and there was no credible threat, you know, just because of whatever. If he has even uttered this at any other time this year or in the past, like, this kid needs help. Like, I don't care if it's like a credible thing or if he was really serious, this kid needs help and she sees him in the halls, she sees him in class, and it frightens her because she doesn't feel safe. It just.
The key point here is again, not talking about individuals, but just to clarify, there is no connection between that missing key and any statement of threat.
I want to talk about the key part a little bit more, because I get that you're concerned with it. And although there's keys out there, this is the only one that's been missing in some time. So it is a big deal. So, you know, we did work with police, tried to recover that key. We said if we don't get, if we're not able to recover by the end of what was last week, we're, you know, in the process of determining whether we can rekey or some other kind of lock system. So I'd like the business manager, Mrs. Rinnell, to talk about that going forward. She's the facilities person as well.
So we have obviously analyzed what we leave, the keys that are floating around out there, as this is previously said, as well as you're looking back on when the building was opened, I don't believe the processing, which keys were turned out was as tight as they are now. So we do recognize that there are keys, other keys out there, all of those, and alleviate this situation. Again, just due to the fact that the key only opens interior doors, there could be no entrance from an exterior point into the building with this key. Again, with that said, we are looking at the possibility of rekeying. It's not something that can happen overnight. It takes a lot of time to rekey the doors. And interior doors alone are going to be upwards of about $10,000 to rekey. So it's something that we're looking to find potential funding for, if that's what the board wants to do moving forward.
You guys keep saying that it only opens interior doors. There's no metal detectors on the doors. So if this kid decided to bring something to school.
Or any, again.
Well, I'm just saying, if any kid, if any kid decided to bring something to school, there's nothing to stop them. There's no, you know, electronic to stop them at the door. And with, until a rekey decision is made, you know, the key can be passed around. Just because it wasn't found today doesn't mean X, Y, and Z don't have tomorrow or it's just frightening the fact that if they can get it in the building, they can get it in the room.
Stacy, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to recover that key. I certainly hope that we will. But the decision has already been made and, and Shannon, you have already asked questions, you have already put up bids, correct? And to find out how much it would cost to rekey our building, this building?
Um, we haven't put up bids yet. I've spoken to the sludge vendors that could rekey at the quantity and the level that we're looking at.
So we need to get, we're going to get on that as soon as we can. All right, the key was not turned in last week and we are moving ahead to get this building rekeyed. It's a priority.
So let's just clarify a couple things regarding the discussion that we've had. First of all, I think all the messages that we've heard tonight are the idea that although this was an incredibly scary situation for a lot of students, a lot of parents, that by about 9:15 in the morning, it was determined there was no credible threat. And I think that that's a clear message here that there was no credible threat in this situation. Second of all, we're carrying a message loud and clear that parents should have been contacted sooner, which relates to number three, which is the idea that already I hear school administrators and the school board saying, what lessons did we learn from this and how will we do things differently in the future? And then the fourth piece of that that I heard is the rekeying option, that's being guided by the district, but also by the school board. So those are the four pieces that I've heard in our discussion so far. Does anyone else choose to speak? Stacy, we'll give you a chance again, but let's see. Yeah, you want to go ahead? Can I identify yourself?
All right, we're glad to hear.
I'm an adult, I have two kids in school. I was not aware of anything going on until my daughter called me with her voice shaking, as bad as mine is probably right now. And I did call, I appreciate the school releasing my children immediately. They were home within 20 minutes. I was able to go back to work, felt relieved. The part that bothered me was, it was my daughter who did tell me first that something was going on. And then when I watched the livestream, along with one of my coworkers, my coworker looked at me, she said, did you know about this before school started? And I said, no. Because there was a comment made and then also, and hours, an hour and a half later, when I finally got the email, the text, and the robocall, my kid were already home by that point, in all of those messages that went out, it stated, parents have the right to either keep your kids home today or release them early. I would have kept my kids home if I would have known something was going on. And so to me, that being in your statement, made the school a purpose.
Good point. So that's part of the statement. The statement was that parents made sure to keep their children, and some did, many didn't. And parents may have their child excused from school. The rest of it is, it will be considered an excuse to absence for the day and won't come towards any trulency action in the future. So that was the full message.
I understand that that part that says that parents could protect their kids home before we even knew that something was going on, some really stupid.
Well, when some parents did do that.
But how did they not know?
I can't speak to that, they don't know.
I mean, because I would have kept mine home. And so to me, that, how did some get noticed and not this time?
Yeah, I can't speak to that. It wasn't something that we said, don't assume this.
I didn't get any notice. I'm a parent just like you, I did not get any notice until my kids were home. And I agree.
That's absurd.
We need to inform people immediately, it's what we know. Even if we haven't included anything, what do we know? And if we know nothing, let's tell them we know nothing. Because at least we'll know something that they know nothing is better than nothing.
Exactly. And when Ms. Briggs was saying about adding something while so that we're not working for our days first. I mean, I worked for 20 years for Washington County. I have interviewed and done many investigations with officers. I know how that whole area process works. But at the same time, you know something's happening up front, just let us know. So we can make the educated decision if we are just, or we know we're safe. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. And just to clarify your point, because it is a really strong statement, this idea of just let us know so we can make an informed decision. Good one, thank you.
As soon as possible.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Ms. Briggs, do you want to have more word? Okay. So does anyone, either from the school administration or from the school board, want to make any statements?
I do actually, I haven't much planned this, but I think it's important for, maybe you can hear this too, one of the messages given to staff is that, yes, it's very important that students and staff alike are encouraged to report accurate information in a timely manner. I want to emphasize that accurate piece, but also note that one of our emphasis is also to make sure that individuals who are accused and acquitted falsely are not continued to be treated in any such way. So our staff is working on the invigoration of inclusivity for all of our students and it is very important to make that statement, given especially what Dr. Aslan had noted about research of students and the fallout from being inaccurately accused of something. So I felt compelled to state that and to make sure that the school board is aware that we do have concerns for all of our students and that our staff is ensuring that that is occurring to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody else like to speak? Ms. Grace, anything to say? Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Are you wrapping this up now or are you, if you ask for suggestions, other suggestions?
I think you just opened the door to other suggestions.
I'm just wondering, well, I have a question and it will probably be to the two parents, three parents, four parents, five parents here. It is, but if you got a call from anyone, any school district or any place that you worked or whatever, it said, what would you want to hear? Would you want to hear, something's going on? Wait for more information?
We have an incident reported at the school. We are currently investigating it. We will get back to you when we have more information on the subject. You know, we are taking care of the kids, because your staff is taking care of everyone. But you do have something going on and there are police outside of the school.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. That's helpful information, thank you.
Yes. Do you have anything else that you would like said?
If you were going, if there was a procedure in place that you were going to have, like all the kids be kept in their first lock period classrooms, so that until the investigation was complete or something like that, that would be nice to know. Because then we know that our kids aren't wandering the halls and could run into possibly a shooter or somebody. That would make me feel better that I knew that they were in behind, even if there's a key missing, a locked door, and that they, their location is known.
And perhaps someone in the district office could come up with a better response to a phone call from a parent, then, no, we're not at lockdown, I have no idea what's going on, we'll get back to you. Because my daughter texted me in my home school. I said, are you guys in lockdown right now? Because in my mind, if you guys are in lockdown, nobody's getting in, nobody's getting out, everybody's like safe, for the moment. The next thing I saw was a picture of police cars, but I don't side it with them. The other part that's not very comfortable to me, and knowing more about the situation now, I can understand it, however, I basically felt like you putting all of the students in this room together, now we have to catch the fish. And somebody wants to do something, you've got a whole building right there.
And somebody wants to do something, you've got a whole building right there. And that's good. I would have preferred honestly, if you would have done an announcement over the announcements, still having those kids in their rooms, rather than bringing them all into the same room with God knows who.
Other suggestions?
We thought the same thing at my house. And the timeline was, I heard it tonight, was that the investigation concluded no credible threat and within five or ten minutes they brought people in here. Unfortunately, we didn't know that, okay? After the fact, it sounds reasonable, but before the fact, when we're all on high alert, yeah, you weren't the only one thinking that. I was thinking that. My wife was thinking that. Now, there is some explanation after the fact. But during, on game day, we need more information. And you are right, both of you, all of you, we need more information as we know it. And we don't, you can't make a script for this. You can't say, "This is the paragraph you will say when this happens again, if it does." No, you just have to use your judgment at the time and tell people what you know in a proper way. Hopefully, you say it right. But there is no game plan for the exact sentences that you would say. And I think we learned that. And we will definitely try and do a better job.
Was this timeline available Wednesday night or whatever? I don't remember if it was Monday or Thursday or something. But this was all available that night? Or has this come over the left?
I mean, I put the timeline together in preparation for this meeting as requested.
But you had a timeline last week?
I have awareness of the timeline as the person in charge is.
Well, Stacy, could you come down to the microphone so that your question's going to be heard again? So what is your point about the timeline?
If you guys all knew the timeline last week, why didn't we just have a meeting or an email or something with the timeline on it? Because you haven't given us like specifics or anything, like, you know, kids' names or like something like that. So if the timeline was already, like, everybody in administration at least, I would assume, knew the timeline, because you guys were all working it, why didn't we just shut this down that night and send out an email to the parents saying, "This is the timeline, this is what we did, this is how it happened." Why did it take this long to get this pushed out?
Basically, what we presented tonight, if that were to went out in an email on Wednesday night, I think it would have cleared out the lot.
Come on down to the microphone. Thank you for being able to have the floor, anyway. Thank you.
Because my wife talked to Sarah Johnson the next day. She pretty much assuaged most of my fears almost immediately. So if she knew the next day, then I don't understand why it's taken so long for an email, a fax, something on the district website to state what you just stated. Why has it taken so long?
And that is what I'm saying. If you, if we could have had an email stating what you guys basically stated tonight, I mean, that would be a lot more at ease. Not saying you already come up with something that you're looking at, right? But you wouldn't have had that probably on Wednesday night. But you would have had that timeline and given a little bit more information, rather than we had it and investigated it and stopped. That's basically what we got.
Yeah, you made it look like you guys had done this all in less than like an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Like the kids got to school and by nine fifteen, you guys had this all figured out.
So more information as even as a follow-up to the incident would have been helpful, they were reassuring to you as a parent?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
I mean, Facebook was blowing up. And I know social media is a mess. But I think that could put a lot of people's minds more at ease. Just a little bit of information can be a very powerful thing. Yes, accounts would be a very bad thing, but in this situation, I think it would have been a very powerful thing.
And I get that you guys are restricted by what you can and can't tell us. I understand that. But there are some things that we could have been told right away that would have like completely put almost everybody at ease, is number one. And number two, those of us who were still talking about it. You know, we would have done exactly what we did, which was come here and talk to you guys in person. I mean, I talked to Sarah in person. I felt better, but there are still some concerns I have. And one of them was communication, and the other one was, you know, this key incident thing. And you guys are working on it, you guys are taking care of it, get that. But I'm just saying, if you would have had a little more information that night, a lot of people wouldn't have been stressed out, you know, for like a whole weekend.
Sure, so the two, the two articles, the one from Dr. Esalen and the one from the chief of police, didn't give you enough information? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That timeline would have been helpful, even if I didn't say that.
She told us tonight? Would have been nice. I actually had three people at both the next day, so did you send your kids to school that night? And I went, "Yeah." If I would have had that information, I'd go, "Yeah, because the school did." And I would have felt much better about that.
That's why I want to talk to Sarah. Because I was like, I asked her to school, she can't just stay home. But I personally, I need somebody to look me in the face and say, "We're taking care of it, it was nothing." You know, I just need somebody to look me in the face and say, "You're not listening."
Well, another thing is a really interesting point that you make about the fact that you needed the face-to-face and you wanted enough information to feel comfortable. And I think that that's the piece that we're talking about, enough information to feel comfortable. I want to commend you, Ms. Johnson, for the fact that we also heard Ms. Grace say, "And she relieved so many of my concerns right away," which is the good news, right? There's still a lesson to be learned.
And at that point, did she like, did she give up any games or any confidences or?
No, she wouldn't do that.
And she said to me, "The district has decided, like, I'm willing to stand here and talk to you one-on-one and tell you this and this and that. The district has decided, this is how we're going to handle it and we're going to have a meeting." And I'm like, "Okay." Like, you know, she's willing to tell me some stuff and she's willing to say to me, you know, "There's things that I can't say to you, please come to me."
And Stacy, and we should just let you know, it takes a little while for this to be organized. I'm responsible for getting the board here. And we have lives as you do, although we know that we serve you. And we tried to select the date, had, you know, and we're not all here, but we surely tried to be. I looked at the dates and said, "Listen, Friday night is Friday night. And I'm not going to ask parents to come in on Friday night. And Saturday meeting, well, again, logistics weren't good. Sunday, no, I don't think so. Monday, we had a meeting last night. So here we are for you and we truly appreciate you coming in and sharing your ideas. They have been written down. Kevin has written them down, David has written them down. And we truly appreciate your suggestions." Because you go out of parents.
Well, honestly, I appreciate you saying that, but honestly, I think if something, more information would have been given out, you wouldn't have had a meeting. You know, if there would have been that additional information following up, we would have had you. Thank you.
Good point, we need more information sooner and we needed a follow-up and we didn't get it until tonight. So thank you very much. I think, well, I know myself, I shared both your same concerns with my daughter who was also here. I was also getting texts, not knowing what was going on. Being out of correct said that there were politics all over school. So I'm sad. My take was almost a little bit different than what you were saying earlier about, you know, why everybody in one spot. You know, my daughter was asking, "Can I leave right now?" And my thought is, I don't know if this is an inside threat or an outside threat. You know, so I was saying, "You stay right there until you're released by the administration." So not knowing, you know, it's easy to assume that the threat is inside, but sometimes the threat is outside. And I didn't know where it was, you know? So I fully share your concerns I have myself and we're going to learn from this.
And I get that, and this is all the learning process, I mean, the world was a lot different when I was in school. You know, and.
When I was in school, we were still carrying handbags and backpacks and stuff.
Yeah. And, you know, so I get that. And I appreciate you guys taking the time and working on it also. Because it is a work in progress, part of this stuff is going to be solved overnight.
I would say there probably will be a challenge for us to get out there faster than social media because if kids don't have the audit, it's fair.
So it's having a statement from those in charge.
Yep.
You know? Okay, yeah, social media, they're going to be plastering stuff all over the place. But it's getting that, this is from the actual authorities. This is from you guys. This is from Dr. Esalen. You know, this, I mean, you guys are the ones we look up to, you know, we expect you to take care of our kids. So having that follow-up from you? Yeah, I would have loved to have come in here on Thursday and spoken with Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Esalen, or Mr. Gator. You know, I couldn't do that because of my job. But having gotten something from you, with some of that more information, I would have trusted you guys.
Just as I thought, you know, I did send Skyler to the families directly from here on Thursday, which is saying, "I'm reiterating that this interview had thoroughly investigated, that we had also thoroughly investigated that safety is a concern and please come see me anytime." So I had not received one email response or one phone call since then. So part of this feedback is knowing, not knowing that people still need more information outside of maybe what was happening on Facebook. So I, as a building leader, knew I had completely got that given from the communication provided as well. So that's just a point of reference as well.
And when did you do that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
And I got that and I appreciated that. And then also I got everyone's right after that. So in reference to her, so which was very nice, you know, but I just had a little one that was in her review. And I am very disturbed by the number of MBS. With all of the social media, yuck, that went out pretty much, and this is bad. It's awesome. And that's ridiculous. And my voice is big enough for a lot of people.
And I was just going to say, thank you so much for being the voice. Because if you don't have direct dialogue about this, we can't make the necessary changes. We have to hear the voices directly from the people who have reactions to the situation. Including some of the board members that have direct reactions to the situations. The way that we make real change is to be able to hear that information and decide how to do things differently the next time. That's how we all learn, right? So thank you so much for, specifically for the two of you and your information about it. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Anybody really important like to say anything else?
I would say, so I just want to, and this is made the information going forward, but as a parent, in the world that we live in today, we rely on our schools to keep our children safe. But to a certain extent, we know that that's not entirely 100% possible because we've seen what has occurred so horrifically in schools. And so that balance of parental discretion and knowledge that it is impossible for us to end and eliminate every single threat to our children, it's a really, really challenging balance. And I think that it might be, and I view this incident as a recorded potential threat handled in extreme measure to make very sure that our kids were safe and then was read in a very wrong way and not communicated soon enough with enough information. A part of that is the back end of it, if we can qualify even threat one, threat two, threat three, this is a potential threat not substantiated yet, we are investigating. This is, I mean, if there had been a bomb threat on this date at school tomorrow, we would have closed school. I mean, there are certain things that parents and I would like to know that this is what will happen. And some of that, I understand, we can't give everything out in terms of keeping our kids safe. But just knowing the different levels and what we can expect as parents is one piece of it. And I really appreciate it, Stacy, too, about individuals in our district that need help, students. Because it starts in kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And as a board member, I've really been focused on, and we've been trying to really focus on mental health and the emotional health of our students. We're doing that in a variety of ways. And I think that I want to know that we're doing everything that we can for students that are struggling with something that could potentially get them to a place where they would contemplate carrying out a violent act in our school. I think we're on, we're doing that in reassurance and that would be good for us to know, the board members and our community as well.
I just want to say, as a parent, Parkland is not that far in the past. That was handled poorly. And the day that I came to talk to Sarah, that morning, these students sent into a school and as kids were pulling up, was shooting them. That's the kind of stuff that goes through my mind, is that just because it wasn't a threat today, you know, I don't need to keep killing TV anymore because I can't stand watching all these, like, reports about all these kids who are like, "Why not go handle them?" But it still filters through from other channels and it's like, you know, when on the radio, they're saying they have an active shooter outside of the town that should be good because they're pulling up to school. You know, I, that could have been my key yesterday. So it's just, guys know ahead of time. Just tell us, so we can make a decision. Like, do I send my kid to school or do we keep her home? You know, then it's on me. Like, if she gets hurt or something happens, then it's on me. Like, if I send her to school knowing there was a problem, then it's on me. Like, you got to give me the tools, you got to give me the information, so I can make a decision. And if she's going to pull up to school and she's going to see hot cars sitting outside, you got to tell me there's going to be hot cars outside. So I can tell her, "Chill, they're working at it." Because that's what I ended up doing. It's like, chill, they're working at it. Like, I'll tell you when I know what I know. On the other hand, I was in Superior when she texted me and I'm thankful that all of the major workers were here because I'm literally certain I'm in here in forty-five minutes.
Anybody else like to comment? I want to recast some of the information that we heard. I know that a lot of people have been taking notes, but I think that there are lots of valuable statements that have remained tonight by a number of people. I especially want to thank those parents that were brave enough to speak, even if you didn't plan on speaking. Here's, here's some of the information that I've heard. This idea that although this incident was determined as no credible threat, it doesn't mean that a lot of people weren't upset about it. And it doesn't mean that we can't learn lessons from it. It gives us an opportunity to look back and say, "How could we do it differently? God forbid if it happens again." So I think there's two reasons to have a meeting tonight. And I would say, as a concerned citizen, not just an email, but to be able to do face-to-face is really, really valuable for two reasons. First of all, we hear your voice and we hear it directly from you and all of the emotion that's attached to it. And I respect that emotion, especially as a parent and as a community member. And second of all, there are obvious lessons that we can learn from this situation. So here are the things that I've heard. This idea of no credible threat, although definitely there are things that can be learned from this situation moving forward. Second of all, strong message about contacting parents sooner, even if there isn't clear information or clear resolution. The idea that we need to let parents know so they can make informed decisions about their children. Couple of strong statements that I heard. Statements like, "We are taking good care of the students and of the teachers." The statement of, "People need to know if there are going to be hot cars outside when they drive up." And the idea that, "Here's the information we have so far, there'll be more information to come." And then closing the loop when you have more information. All of those things are really strong lessons learned here, especially related to parents and communication with parents because we know that parents are making everybody really quickly in this modern age of social media. Relating to that, there are a couple of items that I'm hearing about the discussion tonight. The first is, I know there's already a review of current procedure and rewriting of procedure for the future to make sure that students and teachers a procedure for the future to make sure that students and teachers and parents are in the loop and are safe and secure. So, I think that review of procedures, I think, is an important piece moving forward. Um, this idea of the school board and school administrators reviewing the idea of the rekeying option. And, and I assume that you'll be putting that on the back end for future meetings to discuss how you're going to proceed with that particular issue, although it isn't resolved yet. Um, and then this idea of, um, once the situation is resolved, um, what kind of information is going out to parents and students, um, after the incident in order to make sure that, um, they feel comfortable knowing all they need to know? Any other observations tonight that I missed that, that should be included in this? Anyone else like to speak tonight? Madam Chairman, I will give you the final word. However, I want to say one thing, and that's, um, specifically to the parents. After the work last night with the school board on strategic planning, um, we had a fairly long discussion about, about this particular incident and the importance of this incident moving forward. And Stacy, I'm going to use your words. Chill, they're working on it. And, and it isn't just words. I, to a person, each one of these individuals, including the chief, um, are thinking about, how could we do it better? How could we make sure that everybody's safe? How could we do it differently to make sure that, that, um, we can do it better if it happens the next time? So, they are working on it. Madam Chairman?
Thank you, sir. And once again, thank you. Thank you for all the people that have, have shown up tonight, and, um, we will work hard on that communication piece. And, um, and if you, Stacy or Lisa have a question, you know that you can contact the person in charge of that building and, and get those answers and, and share that. You know, share your, the success story that, of what you've heard, and that it was painless, you know, to come in.
Class of eighty-nine knows. All, I told all my girlfriends, we all had kids here, we all, everybody together, class of eighty-nine knows.
All right, so class of eighty-nine, you know exactly what's, what Stacy knows, and thank you very much for sharing that.
And so, you would let it go right now, uh, tonight? And then they also would have been here?
Yeah. Oh, I heard you posted on Facebook, where are you?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And, and thank you for that.
Yes, thank you very much for that. And thank you for not live streaming it. Um, it will, please tell them that this video will be on the, the website soon. I'm not, I can't say tonight or tomorrow, but very, very soon. And so, you will be heard, and, and again, thank you. So, um, board members, do you have anything else to say before I ask for an adjournment? No? All right, very good. So, we will end this meeting. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Then was made the motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, a second to that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, lady.